Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We'd ask that you please rise as President Wayne Smith from Abundant Life Assembly, lead the Center of Vacation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for this season, for unto us a child has been born, a Savior. Father, tonight, we ask that that Savior would be here tonight, and everything that's said and done may bring glory and honor to you. We pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment, we pray for favor of God upon our community. We pray, Father, tonight, for the workers, Father, the highways and the byways. Father, keep them safe tonight. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that wherever two or three are gathered in your name, that you shall be. May everything that is said tonight, Father, be in glory and honor in the favor of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, December 4th, 2017, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Mrs. Speedo's dying tonight.
He's trying to talk with a paranoid voice.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda in the Committee of the Whole Recap. The Committee of the Whole was postponed tonight, the discussion surrounding the RTC, an update from our lobbyist, Joel Carlson. That will take place on two weeks from tonight, Monday, December 18th, at 4:00, right here in the council chambers. With that, I would...Andrew, do you have any updates to the agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approval is...agenda is approved. There are no public hearings tonight, and there are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we'll ask Kent Mattson to give us an update on the Mill Street conduit debt refinancing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your board packet, or after your board packet, you received three documents pertaining to a requested action from LRHC Long Term Care, Inc., which is otherwise known as Mill Street Residents. Mill Street Residents and Bremer Bank have reached some arrangements to change the interest rate on the financing that the city sponsored in 2006. And because of that, the city has to take action to adopt a resolution to approve the interest rate change, which would be represented by an amendment to a loan agreement, and then an alange to a promissory note to reflect the updated interest rate. So after your board packet was sent, you received the resolution, a copy of the First Amendment, and a copy of the alange. The resolution, which would be requested to be adopted this evening, basically says that the city approves of the two documents that are being amended, approves of the adjusted interest rate, authorizes the mayor and the city administrator to execute those documents, and that would allow Bremer Bank and Mill Street Residents to move forward with the adjustment to their interest rate. As with all conduit financing, the city is not at risk for repaying any of the loan arrangements. Your full faith and credit is not being pledged, and there are no city facilities that are pledged to secure the loan. You're basically acting as a facilitator for Bremer Bank to make tax-exempt, bank-qualified financing available to Mill Street Residents, which is permitted under statute. So before this, both the city's bond counsel and Freiburger Law Firm, which is special counsel on the deal, approved the form of the resolution and approved of the two documents that the city is being asked to sign. So appreciate you facilitating Mill Street Residents' refinancing by considering the resolution, and the action would be to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Kent. Does anyone have any questions for Kent? If not, we would...
I will offer that resolution. One second. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Scott. Any questions on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Yes.
I will abstain.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you, Kent.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a...an update from the Sister City Commission. Tonight, we have Mr. Dean Monkey and Mr. Sean Taylor to give us an update on the activities. I believe they just returned from overseas trip.
Sure. In October, I'm Sean Taylor, president of the Sister City Commission here in Fergus Falls. Just a quick reminder, for those of you wondering what it is, this commission came about about 10 years ago, and we focus on culture and exchange and educational activities. So one of the things that has happened recently is that we have sort of reinvigorated our relationship with the...our partners in Norway, which is a region called Nord Hordeland, just north of Bergen, in case you are wondering where it's at. Why this is important for us is because in the past year, in 2016, in the summer, the Sister City Commission was invited to bring two teachers from the Fergus Falls and Underwood District to Norway, where we went ahead and met with our Sister City Commission over there, our partners, and with teachers who had agreed to partner with Kennedy teachers here. And we had a week in Bergen that was really interesting. They were kind enough to pay for the whole trip for us and run some seminars on how classrooms might work together in a digital age. So for those of you that don't know, in the past year, then, at Kennedy Secondary School, Gen 11 has been involved in a virtual classroom exchange with students there in Norway. In Underwood School District, Jesse Arbuckle has done the same, and they had a blog going. The Gen's class participated in a immigration/immigration simulation that the other school was running in Norway. And this past spring, then, we had a visit from the Sister City Commission to Fergus Falls, along with the teachers who were participating on this side, so now we were able to host them. And at that time, it became apparent from some of the administrators who came along from the high school over there, that there was interest...further interest in collaboration. And this summer, Dean Monkey received an invitation to visit the Knaivik High School there, and in October, we traveled over. And at this point, I'll let Dean talk about what fruits came out of that visit.
Good evening. Dean Monkey, secondary school principal here in Fergus Falls. And to sum it up, we had a fantastic visit over in Norway, probably because of how well we had hosted that group here through a lot of members of the community. They were going to make sure that they did a nice job in making a return hosting opportunity there. So we had a great time, but more importantly than that, we got to see at least a couple of their primary schools. We also got an opportunity to see about three of their high schools over there. And one thing that they really do well at their sister high school with which we're associated with is that they do great work in relationship to internships, work experiences, putting their students out in the community over the course of the school day. So we really wanted to go over there and learn from them. They've been doing this for like 25 years. We've just barely touched at the surface of that with some of our industrial tech programs and our auto programs. So we had an opportunity to go over there, learn from them, how they're making those connections, how they're keeping those connections over years, and give us an opportunity to explore those opportunities for our kids. In fact, I'm planning to have a work session meeting with our school board coming up a week from tonight, where we're going to put out a two-year plan with which we would like to expand those opportunities for our high school students around here and with some of our local businesses. So we're really excited about having the opportunity to do that, learn from them. And they also took back with them our middle school ideas, and how we're introducing students to concepts in family and consumer science, industrial technology early, and they would like to do some more of that with their middle schools over there that feed these high schools. So it's been a great exchange up to this point. We'd like to have the opportunity in the future to send more of our staff and teachers over there to even learn more, but we'll look for a little support along the way, maybe to be able to do that here shortly in the near future. But it's been a great program so far, and we're just going to keep this thing going. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, and thank you, Sean. I had a chance to meet with the group this summer when they were here, and what a great group, and obviously very energetic and enthusiastic about the work that you were doing and the fruits that it will bear. So anyway, keep up the good work, and thanks for the...
Thank you.
There is no open forum this evening. Under the consent agenda, there's a... Do you have a copy of the consent agenda in your packet? There's also one on the board. If anyone wants to discuss any of the items on the consent agenda, we'll pull that off. If not, I would look for a resolution adopting the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinances and resolutions, we'll need an introduction of the first reading of the ordinance 65, which is the rezoning of Woodland Heights. Andrew, did you want to speak briefly to that?
Yes, real quickly, Your Honor, members of the council, we're proposing that the Woodland Heights neighborhood be rezoned from agricultural RA to R1, which is single family. RA is the holding zone for the city of Fergus Falls, so when something's annexed into the city, it automatically goes into RA. And now we're taking the formal action to change the zoning to single family, which would maintain the characteristics of the neighborhood. And we've had a couple of open houses with the neighborhood, and we've had good feedback, and I think this is a very supported change. So tonight, we're just introducing the first reading, and if there's any questions, we can answer those as well.
Someone like to introduce that?
I'll offer.
Thank you, Scott. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 64, which deals with the Committee of the Whole meetings. And just a reminder to the council and to the public, the...this ordinance changes the Committee of the Whole meetings to be held on Wednesday prior...immediately prior to the first and third Monday of each month at 7:00 AM in the council chambers. Correct, Lynn? All right. So with that, we will need...we just need a roll call, unless anyone has any questions. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution certifying property abatement costs at 331 Freiburg Avenue. April, did you want to speak to this?
Good evening. In your council packets, there was a recommendation. The owner of this property wants to work with the city in abating a nuisance, and there is an option to do that through Minnesota Statute Section 463.21, and we have drafted up an agreement with Ralph Nicomole, and we would just need the consent to lean the abatement cost to this taxes.
Any questions, April?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, the resolution.
Second.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Item number four, we will need a resolution deferring payment from the liquor store to the sewer fund. Bill, did you want to address this for us, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet, I put a memo together. If you'll recall, we set up an interfund loan, basically, back in 2015 to pay the costs of the irrigation system at the golf course back from the liquor store. And prior to that, we had made a previous payment on that, too, but I would like to defer that to a future year for cash flow purposes. Our cash balances in our liquor store is getting down to a level where I don't want to take this out of there. We need to maintain that for cash flow purposes and try to build that cash back up in the coming year or so. Good news on all of that, the liquor store is very profitable, doing great. You know, we rank well in the state. We...it's after those operations that we, you know, as the city council, make a choice to take funds out of that liquor store. And we're transferring about $584,000 out of the liquor store this year, as well as next year, in just annual transfers to the general fund. And so this was over and above that, as well as other projects we've done. But long story short, want to keep that in the liquor fund at this time, and we'll bring that back in the future to you.
And there's no immediate need in the sewer fund, it's just a matter of action. By law, having to pay it back at some point.
Because it's interfund. It's between two funds of the city, so externally, it doesn't change anything, but we'll keep it on the books of those two funds separately.
Any questions, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I have one question. How soon do we own the rest store?
As of December 1st, we made our last bond payment. So that's the first thing that's going to help us next year, is our bond payment for $140,000 of principal. We paid that liquor store off just on the 1st, and so next year, we don't have a bond payment to make, so that's going to help us in that cash flow as well, bringing that back up some.
Sure. Any other questions, Bill? If not...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Anthony.
Of...
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $78,768, and if there's any questions on that, we'll refer them to our finance director, Bill Sonmar, and if not, I'd entertain a resolution to pay those...
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Jim. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under board, committee, and department reports, we'll have an aquatic center feasibility study, update, or presentation, final presentation. I know we have a number of members in the audience, and I think Amy's going to lead us off in this discussion, so Amy, go.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the report, the final report of the family aquatic center feasibility study that's been underway for the better part of 2017. We had anticipated having a representative from U.S. Aquatics, the consultant that the city engaged earlier this year with us this evening, but due to the weather, he was not able to travel from the Twin Cities area. But we've been working hard since October, when the draft report was presented to the city council, to fine-tune and make sure that the work of the committee is reflected accurately in the report that you receive within your packet. So just to start off, there are members of the committee here, and want to make sure that they get recognized as well. My notes, Bridget Leonard will be providing some information on the report itself, but also here this evening is Angela Feedler, who is a community member and also active with Forward Fergus Falls, which has been a supporter of family recreation facilities and continues to support projects like this. Caroline Gustafson, is she there? Yes. From the Park and Recreation Board, as well as Lake Region Healthcare. Rick Oden from the Park and Recreation Board is here, and as well, various city staff with Steve Plaza, representing parks. And myself, Ryan Miller, also supported this project as well. Okay. Great. So I just wanted to extend a thank you to the committee for their work over the last year on advancing this, and really having some thoughtful dialogue about the needs and wants and considerations for this amenity within the community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bridget to go through some of the findings of the feasibility study, and then I will provide some follow-up information from the October Committee of the Whole meeting, and we'll take some questions from there.
Thank you, Amy. Welcome, Bridget.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and Mayor Shire for having our committee here tonight again and presenting. For some of you, most of you, this will be somewhat of a review, as this information was presented at the Committee of the Whole on October 2nd. However, we do have a little more detail and solid information regarding expenses for the build, as well as a better idea of how this project can break even, or even have revenue exceed expenses operationally and ongoing by just a few thousand dollars, according to what U.S. Aquatics has helped us with, based on our size of our community and the bather load, and the idea of how many people would actually use an outdoor facility for the 13-week season that we have here, which is a whole quarter of a year. Let's not forget that, because on days like this, we have to channel those 13 warm weeks of swimming outdoors that we can. So at any rate, thanks again to our committee. This was a very inclusive committee, and one that put their opinions, or wants, or personal desires about an aquatic facility to the side, and said, "Let's see what comes of this. Let's have trust in the process, and let's see what comes out of it." So I will quickly go through and review the steps that we have taken, and then turn it over to Amy to give you some of those other additional questions that you had, give the information on that. Down, right? So here's just a brief outline that we did start in January of 2017, so it has been almost a full year here that we've been working on this project and doing monthly meetings. The scope of this study was pretty extensive. We did an online survey. We did a needs/wants analysis. We held a couple of public forums. We did some cost estimates. We did some rendering and some concepts, which was honestly the most fun part. I think my committee would say the most fun part about this was actually seeing what the possibilities were for a facility. And like I said, we've gotten some more details on a pro forma. One of the biggest undertakings of this project was a community survey, and we had 1,551 respondents, which we felt really good about, and was a really good sample of our community. And some of the highlights of that were that 78% of respondents felt it was very important to expand recreational aquatic opportunities in Fergus Falls. 16% said it was somewhat important. Three said not very important, and three said very unimportant. An outdoor pool ranked higher than an indoor pool or a spray park. And 79% of respondents said they go to other communities for outdoor aquatic recreation. So our committee looked at all of these surveys and the data that came out of it, and we all agreed that an outdoor seasonal recreational aquatic facility was what we were going to pursue and keep working toward. Another big undertaking of this study was a site analysis. We identified 12 potential sites, and two independent people that are not from here that actually work for U.S. Aquatics, experts in their field, went to those 12 sites and rated them, one to five, on 11...excuse me, on nine different categories. And they are, as you can see, those were the categories. We did give some examples of the worksheets that they used when they were out visiting the sites. This is the one for Kirkbride Park. And based on their analysis, Kirkbride Park ranked highest. It actually tied with the levee. And this is the one from the levee. I won't spend too much time on it, as it is in your packets. We also put the dairy site as an example on this. So after looking at those 12 sites and how they ranked, our committee did rule out the levee, given that it's used by the school quite heavily, and given how close it is to the river, and the concern for the water table under it. Our committee's recommendation, after discussion, is Kirkbride Park. And as you can see, there's lots of reasons why we felt this was a good site. The city owns the property, there's no restrictions, there's plenty of parking, there's room for future expansion, there's walking paths, it's off main traffic areas, it's a well-known location, and it's easy for access for those folks that would visit us regionally. Also, the Glacial Edge Lake Trail will be going through that area, is what is planned and proposed. So we started with a couple of concepts, and this is probably the one that's easiest to see and color, but we are looking...we're up north here where those cars are heading, and this is the...the aquatic center is to the south, but incorporates a lot of the needs and a lot of the requests based on the survey. And after discussions with U.S. Aquatics, the committee requested, and U.S. Aquatics agreed that it was a good idea to have two different bodies of water. So you will see that there's two separate ones. Here's another angle. As I said, we held public forums in August at Roosevelt Park and at the Farmer's Market. These were some of the comments. And we have updated the proposed cost estimates. Phase one of the project, which includes almost everything, phase two gets...adds a few more fun amenities, like diving boards, or actually diving platforms, they're not terribly high, climbing walls, another slide, some more spray features, a concessions area. Those could be add-ons in a phase two, but phase one is where the big costs are, given that you have to build a bath house and get both of those two pools of water completed. So the total expense to build would be $6.38 million. And I don't have a slide in the pro forma, but it is in your packets, which outlines staffing, and bather load, and costs, and revenue that could be generated from concessions. And each year incrementally, both costs and revenue goes up, where it about evens out to about a $4,000 in the black outcome every year for the first five years. And so before I turn it over to Amy, just my last comment or information that I want to give to the council is that there are 19...I'll be accurate. There are 19 pages of comments that people wrote out, qualitative data from this survey. And I read through them today, and there were some very common themes. And those themes were a very urgent plea to do something, and do it now. There were comments that people have lived here their whole lives, and their kids are already raised, and they wish that they would have had something when their kids were young. Another common theme was they don't want to drive out of town anymore, and they don't want to give other communities their money. They want to keep it here. They see this facility is nearby, and they drive, but they don't want to. They want to keep their dollars right here. Another...two more themes that kind of struck out was that they wanted a central location so that it's accessible to many, many kids, and they want it affordable. They don't want it to be cost prohibitive for families who might not be able to come. So I really encourage the committee or the council to look at those and kind of pull from that what you will, but it was really enlightening to kind of see in people's own words what they're looking for. So I'll let Amy talk about some additional requests.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Nice, Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight a few of the items and some additional information that is also included in the final study report, but wanted to just talk through those based on the October 2nd Committee of the Whole meeting. So one piece was to, you know, look at what are the economics of indoor/outdoor and indoor/outdoor combination options, review additional site information. There was some verbiage that was not accurate in that draft report, so that has been updated, and you can talk through that. And then the subsidies, reminder of what the subsidies of those aquatic facilities in Wapperton and Breckenridge, those are the ones we hear most often, people visiting from an outdoor perspective. And we did speak to Detroit Lakes as well, which is a different model. And then the full survey, which was included in your packet.
which was included in your packet. So, we worked further with U.S. Aquatics to provide that information, especially on the indoor and outdoor discussion. And it really was provided back to us from U.S. Aquatics that the, that would take additional, really additional work. That's not within the scope of this current study that was outlined, what the scope of this contract was with U.S. Aquatics, and that it would take a, because there are so many other variables when we look at, especially indoor models, that typically you don't just see an enclosed pool, that it is part of a larger recreation facility like a YMCA or a general community center that would have other programming that would support and offset the costs of operations. So, you know, should we move forward with additional work around that topic, it's really suggested we work in partnership with the YMCA, who has served on this committee and has talked about their long-term facility plans to include an expanded indoor pool area that would try to address some of the recreational needs. But if we would do, say, a feasibility report or look at an indoor facility to work with the YMCA and understand where their future plans are and have them really be a partner in that next step. In looking at that, I mentioned the, the location review that was done, and just wanted to highlight that of the 12 sites that were referenced earlier by Bridget, that the, the group looked at, four of them were within the downtown and riverfront study area footprint. So, there definitely was a look at, you know, based on some general criteria of size, being probably one of the primary drivers and then accessibility and some of the other primary needs from a facility perspective. The highest one that ranked within their, the study area, well, to say they, none of them ranked very high within the overall site analysis. And you can see those numbers within the, the full criteria. I won't go into high detail. The highest one that did rank was MP Park, but the size really didn't work for that. And then the stormwater management issues that are on there also didn't lend it to be a positive site. The dairy was the second highest within the study area, but the railroad was really a key concern that the committee highlighted. From an accessibility standpoint, for the community to be able to get there, that that was a deterrent to look at that as well. And then some of the timing considerations related to the dairy as well. While there is discussions about acquisition, it potentially could be a long process. And based on some of the comments that Bridget shared from the survey itself, people are looking to move forward with this as expeditiously as could be possible. Certainly, can, we can talk more about those sites, but the, the key recommendation that came out on the, by and large, the dominant recommendation was Kirkbride Park, both from the committee and with advice from the consultants as well. The assessments, I'm sorry, the subsidies from the other facilities, as you look at Wapperton averaging around $40,000 to $50,000 for an annual subsidy into their operations. It is a little different, has a lot more lap swim area in the Wapperton model, so different than a pure recreation. It certainly has recreation components. It does have a much larger general swim area. And then Breckenridge is the one that I hear referenced most common by the area residents, that, that they have a between $70,000 and $80,000 subsidy on an annual basis there.
Breckenridge does.
Breckenridge does, yeah. Detroit Lakes is a different model. It's not operated by the city of Detroit Lakes, so that does allow a different operational structure. They have a management agreement with a nonprofit who runs it, and it is more attuned to that community center. It's an all-encompassing facility with the recreation, you know, kids' drop with the pool and, and other indoor activities as well. And they generally, they show a break even, but they, I have spoken to the city administrator there, and there is some unfunded capital needs that they're trying to understand how they're going to address those from a broad perspective. So, that would be, you know, it's a different type of product, and they anticipate it would be 15 to 20 million to build that facility new in today's construction environment.
So, question on that. So, the difference between both the site that you, or the project that you guys looked at, posed with the break even basically of $4,000 surplus, and Breckenridge is, is it the use, usage, the user area that you'd be able to draw from?
You know, I don't know the details on that. You know, the fact they have two facilities within a population that's similar to Fergus Falls combined certainly would be a factor, I would, would think, but I, I don't know a lot about that. And I don't know how much of their debt services, if they have still outstanding debt service.
I was going to ask about debt service.
We haven't gotten full operational outlines of that. So, there could be a debt service component that we're not aware of based on the numbers that were researched by our Parks and Rec Department. The full survey was included in your packet as referenced with the full comments, pages and pages of input that was provided by the respondents to the survey. And I hope folks were able to take a glance at that. So, that was the follow-up information, and we'll have, we'll have time for questions at the end or at any point. If there's questions, please let me know. And then to the, the recommendation of where we're at tonight, I think it's, it's been pretty clear from the community's input that there's a desire for an aquatic facility, and that's been, just continued to be affirmed throughout this process from the feedback sessions through the survey and just general interaction within the community. I've felt, I've felt it. And so, a recommendation would be to accept this report and then direct further work. There are still numbers. We need to make sure we're confident in that feasibility analysis, that those numbers of that, you know, close to break even point that we're confident in, you know, really look at those numbers. And, and is this the right model from a design perspective? That is what the community wants to look at. And then looking at the funding options, you know, there is the logical funding source or, that we might expect with the local option sales tax, and there is an option of extending that, requesting an extension versus to the library's current sales tax going to the voters for that extension. That's something that certainly could be explored and looked at further to determine timing for that. And, and then like I mentioned, the, the final design, what, what does this amenity look like? With that, would be happy to answer any questions. Myself or committee members are here to answer questions.
Thank you, Amy. Justin, did you have anything to add? I know you served on this committee, so.
I think they did a fabulous job. I, no, I don't really have much to add at this point.
Any members of the council have questions for anyone on the committee?
Do we know how much is left of the consultancy? We, I mean, obviously, there was some money allocated to do this study. Did we consume it all in this, in this study?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, are you referring to the funding source? That was the grant funding that funded this. There is, I believe, approximately $5,000 remaining in that?
Right.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one. Has this group looked at going out and doing a fundraiser or raising funds to help offset?
That was one of the questions in the survey. We asked if people would be willing to contribute. So, that is, that information is a couple of different questions in that.
I think to your, to your, we, we as a committee thought we'd want to make sure that the council would support the project first before we went out and did what you're looking for. So, I think that's the direction we're, we're looking for now is, you know, accept the report and then we can start doing some work on that. Because it's talking with some folks on the committee that have done a lot of fundraising in the past. It's, it could be a three, four-year process just for the, not the funding, but the.
Fundraising part.
Fundraising part. So, it can be long, but it goes quick, I guess.
So, I will add that I would encourage that next step of, you know, putting together some ideas of how you're going to fundraise, you know, have that, have that on, on the next report, so to speak, of what your ideas are for that, you know, public, corporate, you know, any grants that you may be able to go after, that kind of stuff. I'm, I'm big on fundraising for these type of things.
Mayor, if I could add to that, just to follow up on the fundraising piece, what Councilmember Ernestson mentioned, that we, what's been recommended is that we have some certainty around what is the project before you ask somebody, are they willing to fund it?
Sure.
And so, we're kind of right at that, that point of getting to that. And once that certainty is there, the committee has expressed a desire to look at the funding from a more holistic and detailed way.
And I know in projects past, we've been able to use professionals, once a project is defined, give us a pretty good idea of what the capacity is for the fundraising piece versus the capacity for whether it's local option sales tax or bonding or whatever, as we put that project together. So, I think that makes sense.
Of the two questions you mentioned about kind of obviously financial support, what were the questions and what were the results?
You didn't read the 174 pages?
That's what you had.
I can't read them, but I got them. 91% of those surveyed would support community fundraising. 81% of those surveyed would support tax funding. So, we got it.
Thank you.
There were only two questions. Those are the.
Yep.
Well, I think it's a good idea to continue down the path. We're talking about, you know, do more of the budget, making sure those numbers are accurate.
So, at this point, I guess we would be looking for a motion or a resolution to accept.
I got a question. I, I think perhaps before we can kind of make some clarified kind of statement about where we want to go, I, I also think it's beholden on us, we've got a master plan, you know, downtown river, you know, front, master plan that's also due, that's going to come out with some recommendations. And I, I actually personally think we should assess both of those somewhat at the same time, is to see what our priorities are. Because, you know, as much as I appreciate this, it's obviously, you know, there's some energy behind this. It's a $7 million project. You know, we've, we've put money into trying to revitalize downtown. I think we need to see where that goes from a priority point of view of what we want to spend. It's not, I mean, if, you know, if, if everything was great, we could just write checks. But obviously, you know, we don't have that ability. Our pockets are not, you know, deep from, everything we do is impacted to the taxpayer. So, I think, you know, I, I think we, we should obviously thank the committee for, for the report and the recommendation at this point, but I, I would like to see us consider everything before we make decisions about, you know, one specific thing. I think we need to get away from this silo kind of mentality of like work on one project and then another project gets, then gets put on the back burner. If we're going to do a project where, like, for example, the aquatic center, if we say, right, you know, let's have a goal of trying to raise 50% of that, we have another, another project that we say, let's try to raise 50% of that, we should be doing both of those things at the same time if we want to try to lift Fergus Falls in total. Doing one project like the library, it's great, you know, that we're doing the library, but it's one project, and it's only an interest of people on the library. It's not every resident in Fergus Falls that wants that. And likewise, the same with the aquatic center.
Your Honor. I would agree with that. I would just add that by accepting the report, I don't think we're locked into.
I, I mean, I'm quite, quite.
Quite well taken. I think to Amy's point of.
I think it was more for, for direction of where you go next.
Yeah. The next, and under the next steps, I think your point's well taken. And as you, if you notice Amy's language, I think you talk about the projects of regional significance. So, we can take some lessons from other communities that don't lock, don't lock into a specific project and say, hey, here's a seven-year vision, and within that seven to 10 years, we're going to do this, this, and this project. So, we're not, we're able to walk and chew gum at the same time.
I think, I think that's it. I mean, we kind of did that. You know, we did the community center, and then, you know, we couldn't do anything with the library until that finished. And then we could do the library, and that was a seven-year span, you know, and, or eight years with a one-year relief in the middle. And I think, as you say, we want to, we want to walk and chew gum at the same time if we possibly can. I know that can be hard for an Englishman, when I used to chew gum.
Walk on the footpath.
Justin made, made the motion. I will do the second. Now, we can discuss.
All right.
All right. So, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yeah.
You should make that a resolution.
To accept the report of the committee.
I'll make that a resolution, Your Honor.
I will second that resolution, Your Honor.
Is there any further discussion on accepting the report of the committee? Any other comments from committee members or audience members? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes. Resolution is approved, and I'd just like to say thank you, Bridget, and your committee for all the work you've done. And although there's a lot of work done, I think we could all agree we're just beginning as well. That's all. On to the next steps, and thank you for the work we've done. All right. Under L, reports from staff and administrative officers. Item number one is a business development of Fergus Falls. And Amy's going to speak to this. Okay, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Before you this evening is a consideration of the renewal of the agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and business development of Fergus Falls, referred to as BDOF. BDOF is a nonprofit independent entity that was created to assist the city with business loans back in 1979. So, it's been in existence for a long time, and during that time period, there's been over $8 million in business support provided through the revolving loan fund managed through BDOF. Originally, it was capitalized with federal U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development dollars, with $300,000 in 1979 and an additional $300,000 in 1982. Currently, there is over $700,000 in loans out in the community, and with 56 active loans and several additional loans in process. So, this has been a very well utilized and continues to be an active loan fund. Administratively, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority locally staff, they process the applications that are received related to the loan funds and oversee the completion of the actual projects itself. Then, city staff disperses the funds and manages the loan payments and any necessary servicing of the loans on an ongoing basis. Currently, there are three different loan programs available through these dollars. There are economic development loans, which are generally rehab loans, and there are facade improvement loans that are more exterior improvements to our business properties. And then a new program that was launched in 2018 in partnership with Otter Tail Power is an LED conversion program, and that helps businesses affect, cost-effectively upgrade to LED lighting for energy efficiency, and loan payments are tied to the energy savings that the company receives with the conversion. So, at this point, there aren't any new loan programs or changes to the use of those funds proposed, as there is a high utilization of the funds as they exist. So, as I mentioned, the agreement with BDOF is up for renewal at the end of 2017, and the consideration for the council tonight is to renew that agreement, to provide those services, to review and approve loans through this. And a benefit of, of using them is that it really stays out of the hands of City Hall. And the, you know, loan payments are basically approved through the, every meeting when you approve your expenditures, that they just are processed through, and it keeps a, a sense of anonymity. Wrong word. We'll use a different word, yeah. A separation from the public face of the borrowers of these funds. An option would be to amend the existing services agreement that the city has with the Economic Improvement Commission and transition those functions of BDOF as a service of the EIC as well. The EIC board discussed that option at its November meeting and would be willing to take on that additional obligation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is staff from the HRA here, and I believe some board members from BDOF as well.
Thank you, Amy. I know Jeff Gaffney was planning to be here, but he's not here evidently. Michael, are you here in his place? Do you have any comments? Would you like to address the council?
I could, please.
Sure.
Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you for having us. My name is Mike Olson. I work with Housing Authority, and we work as the administrators for this loan fund. And it is very well-used. There's always interest in, in the programs. We, we work to keep our, our, our closing costs are extremely low. You know, it's, we have just a very small processing fee, so the borrowers are, are accessing, you know, real dollars that go directly into improvements for their businesses. And it's been, I think, very successful, as, as Amy mentioned, to, you know, for this program to have turned over $8 million in revolving funds over the years that it's, that it's been active. It's, 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 it's been very beneficial to our local businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions of Michael?
Is there a process that you follow to make sure that local businesses are aware that these funds are available?
Absolutely. We, we are a chamber member, and we do an email blast probably annually with them to get to all the members. We've got packets available at our office, contact with City Hall. And of course, you know, there is, oftentimes, you know, if we see businesses remodeling downtown, we're out and about doing other rehab activities in town for homeowners or, or rental projects. So, you know, if we see, if we see somebody doing something, every once in a while, we'll just stop in and make a cold call and just, you know, kind of see how things are going. Sometimes they've got, you know, private funding or bank funding, and that's all they need. And sometimes they're looking more for, you know, some of the gap financing that we might offer and, and help finish a project off, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, the one. I think, one of the things, I think, you know, it is public money, you know, that we're using to a certain extent, and I think somehow we should have some reporting back to the city, and I understand the anonymity piece, but I also believe that, you know, we want transparency to a certain extent, or access to it, so I would kind of like to see more of a quarterly report coming back, but I also, as well on the other piece of it, I think, you know, we want to try to reduce some of the committees, and, you know, we have city staff going to this meeting and to EIC meeting, and, you know, one of the things that we discussed at the EIC meeting was, you know, perhaps, you know, using collaboration between the board and taking some board members from, you know, the Business Development Board and the EIC, so there would be some continuity and bring it into function as one, one unit, and I think, you know, that's something that I personally would like to see, you know, is that, you know, city staff only has so much time, and, you know, they sit in meetings enough now, so we need to find a way of reducing it, whether it's done on this particular day and time, obviously, you know, but I think, you know, within this next year, we should make that, make that happen.
So, I wonder if we could start with asking for quarterly reports, which I think would be acceptable, I would assume, Michael, quarterly reports, and then maybe further investigate in the next year, as we consolidate some of these committees, are there some crossovers, not eliminate the BDOF, sorry, but see if there's some crossover, some of the duties that these committees are conducting, so. I know I did talk to, I know there's a number of members of the committee out in the audience, and I know they're in support of the work that they do, I talked to Scott Schoff today, I'll speak, you know, I'm not voting on this, so, I will say that, to your question, Tom, my business was a beneficiary of this loan funding, and there's no conflict of interest there, I disclosed that three years ago when we got the funding, but I do know that Michael stopped in to my shop when he saw work being done, so they are out in the community, they're getting, they're doing the work, and they're helping the local businesses, so I do think they're doing a good job, and I am supportive of the work that you do, so I'd say thank you. I think that Anthony's point is well-taken, we can always improve the transparency and start with quarterly reports and then look at how we can combine, possibly combine some of the duties of this committee as we move forward. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, and do you need a resolution or a-
Resolution of-
Does the agreement expire at the end of the year?
I would make the resolution that we renew the agreement with the inclusion that they provide quarterly reports, and that over the course of the next year, we'll look at how we can incorporate them into another committee, or evaluate whether we can incorporate them in another committee structure.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second your honor.
Scott, thank you, any further discussion, questions? Thank you, Michael, roll call, please.
Hang on, one second.
I was just going to ask, I might have missed, is it a year-to-year agreement with the committee?
Annual. Generated in December.
Fair enough, I just saw that now.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Christmas.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved.
If I could ask, the level of detail in that quarterly report, is it the type of loan, loan amount?
I think you could, you know, you could put XXX on it, I think, you know, the loan amount, I want to know if anybody's in arrears for one, obviously, and the amount of money that's out, I mean, I mean, I can give you the details of what I'd like to see in it.
Historically, there has been a very low default rate on this loan fund, phenomenally low, actually, so we're not proposing any administrative changes, you know, through this, regardless of what expires over the next year, but we'll work on a format of a quarterly report and then get feedback after the first quarter.
I mean, if you were a banker, what would you want? Ask yourself that question.
Well, the board of the bank or the banker? I'm going to walk away now.
The banker.
Item number two is the 2018 budget and levy presentation, Bill, we were wondering if we had to wait till six? We don't have to wait anymore.
Thank you, Lynn, that's all ready to go. So before you tonight, we have the 2018 budget, and we have not made any changes to the budget since what we presented to you in September, so updated a little information, but no changes to the budgets since that time. I put 6:00 PM on here, that is a state law, we have to hold this public meeting after 6:00 PM, not a problem tonight, so that's good. We're at the end of our calendar, so this is our meeting, we're come to you to adopt the budget, and then get it to Otter Tail County by the end of the month. Get it down here, so you can see we're at December 4th, by the 29th, and the levy is due to Otter Tail County. We've talked about our budget fund types in the past, and we'll go through that tonight, it's just the different types of funds that the city has within our book, so we keep all these different funds as separate businesses, basically. So the highlights here tonight, our 2018 expenditure budget is $44,407,407, and that's one of the resolutions I'm going to ask you to approve tonight. The other one is the proposed property tax levy at $5,978,541, that is a 6.73% increase over the 2017 levy in dollars. You go down to the next line, this is the one that I've changed since September, we have new growth in the city, which is always good news, because you add more to the city, you have more to spread the levy over, so therefore, we might be raising the levy 6.73%, but the impact to the tax rate on which the tax bill is calculated then is at 3.98%. So we saw that same impact for the 2017 budget, even to a greater extent, but here, it's nice to see that continued growth coming into the city, allowing that tax rate to be a little bit lower percent increase than what the dollar change is. Local government aid going up $32,000, we talked about that at our September meeting, and then we're funding a tree trimming program, we went through that as well, get a lot of bang for your buck taking care of our trees, storm comes through, you don't have nearly the cleanup to do when we maintain a tree trimming program. And then we also added $30,000 to our tree removal budget, that's for our diseased trees, we always kind of get kicked in the teeth in our diseased trees, and when that X goes on the trees, they have to come down, so we have, you know, determined we needed to fund that. Street maintenance materials, just like to point out, $340,000 of the general fund budget is for street maintenance. Funding property abatements, that's if we have some problem properties, places that need to be cleaned up, as you recall, in the last year, we took ownership of three different properties, cleaned those up, actually resold them, so that was a good process, we have $82,000 in the budget for that. $57,000 of that funding comes from a tax increment district where the obligations are paid off, we modified that in 2017, so we can put those funds to use, you know, cleaning up some properties in town that come available to the city. The reason we chose that is because you have to use that TIF dollars for housing-related items, we couldn't change the purpose of that TIF district, we could just modify that to allow it to get used for these other housing items. We kept $25,000 in of general fund funding for that when it would be cleaned up and not used for housing, so we could have a little flexibility there on some problem properties. $25,000 for contract planner services, as you know Gordon Heidukovich is retiring later in 2018, so we needed some money in there as well to kind of finish out that 2018 year, even probably before that, if we have some certain projects that we need some planning services. And then the first year of annexation payments to Fergus Falls Township for the Woodland Heights area, and then $5,000 towards fireworks is in the budget to hopefully kind of kick-start some fundraising and see that we have fireworks in the city of Fergus Falls. I won't go through these, they're in the packet, we've talked about them in the past, but things that were requested in the budget but were removed. Our total proposed budget, you see our general fund, the balanced budget there of $11,929,570, special revenue funds, those are funds that have direct funding sources, you know, public library, we levy separate for Port Authority is in there, we have rent coming from State of Minnesota, so things that have indicated revenue source or special revenue. Debt service funds, that's where we make our bond payments, so the city has some debt, we need to pay those each year, that's where those payments come from. Capital projects, the library is included in that, now we have started on that, but we're certainly going to be constructing that library throughout all of 2018, so spending down on those bond proceeds is in that capital project line item. Enterprise funds, that's your water, sewer, storm, liquor stores, refuse business, things that are run as a private business. Internal service, that's our fleet of vehicles rented to the individual departments, coming down to your total budgets, again, there's that $44,407,407 that we'll ask you to approve tonight. Pie chart of our revenue sources, you can see a big portion of those charges for services, that's your water, sewer, you know, all of those utility fund charges, liquor store sales are in those, but we'd like to show that in proportion, because property taxes make up 13% of the budget. Now, to the homeowner, you think of property taxes number one, but it's one funding source that funds the entire city. Intergovernmental has our local government aid in that piece of the pie, again, a big, big portion of funding for the city is local government aid from the state. And use of fund balance, see that at 12%, that looks a little bit high, that's those library bond proceeds that we'll be getting in, and now in December, spending them down, so they go in the fund balance at the end of this year, spend them down next year, and that's why that's a little bit higher. Expenditure budget just shows the areas where we spend the city funds, certainly capital outlay being a large one, again, the library construction throughout the year is in that number, but we always have some big projects going on, so you're always going to see capital outlay be kind of a larger piece of the pie, certainly wages and benefits are a big part of the city, because we are a service-driven organization, with people, equipment, serving the citizens, so. Proposed property tax levy, so this just shows it by fund, showing that $5,978,541 that we'll ask you to approve tonight, that's the 6.73% increase, and then down at the bottom, we're showing that tax rate, again, pointing that out, the impact to the taxpayer being 3.98 instead of that 6.73 because of growth in the city. That's just a chart showing the levies and the rates, and then showing property tax trends. When you look at all the taxing jurisdictions, you can see the city rate there at 57.765 or the 3.98, that would equate to about a $22 increase, then for a homeowner owning a $125,000 home, or 205 for a $500,000 value business. And we've added in Otter Tail County, the school, the HRA, when you combine all that, we're estimating that that'll be a 2.32% increase in the tax bill, and then the school district has their referendum market value rate on the bottom that's actually going down, so certainly we see some, you know, decreases at the school level as well, but comes out to that 2.32. General fund revenues, you can see in a bar chart here, there's the taxes, something we've talked about, we're increasing to fund services, license permits, grants and aids, local government aid, that basically makes up that change, charges for services down there, we have rental registration fees, as we've fully implemented that program, those revenues are up over the prior. Use of fund balance going down, that $135,000, we're using that to do our downtown riverfront master plan this year, so that's changing, we're not using fund balance next year, that's why you see that change. The reason I go through what some of those changes are, and we have a slide here showing what makes up those changes, for this public meeting, we need to be pointing out why things are changing, so that's why I kind of go through that each year, it's part of the state law as well, that we discuss why things change. So that's kind of what I touched on there on the previous chart. Expenditure changes, you can see in the bar chart there, and then wages benefits make up some of that. Elections, we have an election in 2018, didn't have one in 2017, so we have the cost of an election. Benefits, we're bringing that up, to fund about $50,000 a year is what we put away for that. Health insurance going up $16,800. Tree trimming, there's the $60,000 for the tree trimming, and then $30,000 for the diseased tree removal. Contract planner services, we mentioned, annexation payments, and there's $5,000 in that number for doing cleanup of some various annexations, you know, where you have parcels here and there that are surrounded by the city, we're working on getting those cleaned up and brought into the city as well. There's the downtown riverfront master plan, we did in 17, won't have that expenditure in 18. Cable television, PEG access, fees increased, we got that fully implemented last year, so that's bringing up our estimate, and then that gets passed through to PEG access to operate the PEG access organization. Police radio replacements going up $13,000, that is a portion of it, we're looking at replacing radios in 2020, so this is a savings mechanism, do some each year, so we don't do it all in one year, I think we need about $80,000 to replace those in 2020. There's the fireworks we talked about. Communications, in September, that line item was golf course windows out at the clubhouse, we moved some stuff around in 2017, so we're, have, we moved $15,000 in there this year, so we freed that up for the communications budget next year, so that was a change from September. Equipment fund, that's our rental rates, funding our equipment replacements, going up $25,000, and a collection of everything else for that net of $15,000, that change of $256,000 then for the general fund. Port Authority, you have that slide, we have CBHH facility, the Community Behavioral Health Hospital, we receive rent from State of Minnesota, and then we operate that facility, we had paid that off at the end of 2016, that was paid off, the bonds on that one, so that rent changed, but now doing a lot of capital replacements out at that facility. And then the $57,000 transfer is new, that's to deal with those property abatements that we talked about with that TIF district, needs to be handled through the Port Authority. Library fund, $822,000 budget on this one, mainly funded through taxes, we are decreasing some of the utilities and those areas while we're constructing, those will have to come back next year, I know we talked about that in September, but otherwise operating pretty status quo during the construction year now that we're in. Capital projects, this is where we do all our various capital projects, we levy $30,000 in this fund for the sidewalk program, it's worked well for many, many years. Various street projects here, these are all pulled out of the capital improvement plan, if you went through year by year, we never, you know, typically get all these projects done, but they're in the planning queue, we come to you individually, you know, if we can get these projects done, they'll come back to you for approval, so just because they're in here doesn't mean that's a done deal yet. Sidewalk bike path reconstruction, again, some hopes there, we would come back to you with the various projects to get those done. There's the library renewal project during 2018, and the chillers for the community arena that are underway. Liquor store, we talked about that a little bit earlier, this shows the east store looking at operating income of $167,000, west store $407,000, so that shows we are very profitable at our liquor stores, it's after that line item where we transfer to the general fund to reduce property taxes, we talked about that for cash flow purposes earlier, but profitable businesses, happy with our manager, he's doing a good job running those stores. Refuge fund, again, looking at operating income of $409,000 there, this is our garbage collection business, all our landfill, we'll come back to you a little bit later too, as we continue to talk about the new demolition cell and the bits we received, I think we'll come to the next meeting with that, we'll look at doing some rate adjustments there for the demolition cell as well. Sewage treatment, looking at operating income of $344,000, big jump there between 17 and 18, that's because depreciation on our original plant from the 80s now went off, this is our last year of depreciation, so we built up that fund over the years, funding that depreciation, but you would expect to have that built up by now, when the depreciation goes off, you need that money on hand to do those capital improvements out there over the coming years. Water department, same thing, $490 operating income, a lot of infrastructure needs in the water, both water and sewer and storm water throughout the city, so, as you know, we come back at another time with utility rate studies to kind of go through all that with you. all that with you. Stormwater fund, same thing, looking at $130,000 of operating income now. Equipment fund, this is our internal fleet of vehicles, looking at purchasing about $650,000 worth of equipment. That's pretty typical for us each year, we always are doing at least around $600,000, need to try bring that up a little more with inflation factors. That is the presentation, kind of rattled through it quickly for you, but.
Thank you, Bill.
We need to, before we adopt anything, we do need.
Public hearing.
Yep. It's, just open it for public comment, so we don't actually open a hearing, but, yep, allow public to speak.
So we'll do that at this time. If anyone has any questions, comments regarding the 2018 budget, please step to the lecture and state your name.
Hi, my name's Scott Kwame, 218 East Franklin Avenue here in Fergus Falls, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment. As Bill just mentioned, just because something's in there doesn't mean it's a done deal, as you were referring to the capital improvements, and that's the idea that I wanted to kind of key offer. I didn't know you were going to say that. Capital improvement plan as presented is over $12 million worth of improvements and activities that can be funded, and in that, it's in the budget, it defines the plans and the priorities of the city. And I think that that's good, and I'm certainly not complaining about the process at all. The comment that I'd like to make, and the request that will be connected to it, is that the city recognize the regional treatment center as an asset and fund the mothballing and marketing of the buildings and the campus there accordingly. The 2018 plan shows, well, the capital improvement plan indicates that there's $1,325,000 designated for RTC building preservation. And all the plans that I've seen indicate that there is over $1 million worth of demolition planned, but no preservation. And so we, I'd like to have a greater understanding of how the city is planning to spend that $1.3 million in 2018. I believe that the city needs this RTC campus to become a hub of academic, not academic, economic, that's the word. Needs to become a hub of economic activity and job creation for the city. Last year, the city spent $135,000 to develop a downtown riverfront master plan, which I think was excellent, and I think was a proper use of funds, and I think that there's going to be a terrific amount of good that will come as a result of that effort. I'd like to point out that other cities like Brainerd, Little Falls, Hutchinson, Montevideo, they all have rivers, but none of them have an RTC. We've got a very unique asset here in the city, and it ought to be treated as an asset in that way. Earlier this year, I was at this podium to request that the council create a new RTC master plan to replace the old one that was created back in '06 that is obsolete, and I'm presenting that request again. And that is my comment.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else have any comments, questions regarding the budget? All right. If not, we'll bring it back to the council, and we will need two resolutions. First resolution is to adopt the 2018 levy. Scott, call for that. Tom? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
That resolution is approved. Second resolution we'll need is a resolution adopting the 2018 budget as presented by Bill tonight.
Off, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Richels.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
That resolution is also approved. As always, Bill, thank you for the professional job. City finances are in good hands. Jim, thank you, and thanks to Mr. Speedolph for the work on the tax levy committee along with Andrew and Bill, so thanks to everyone who put, it's a lot of work that goes into that budget.
Yes, there is.
Your Honor, members, thank you to the Finance Department, Bill and Sandy.
Sandy, I forgot Sandy.
Do a wonderful job. The entire department has their hands on this process. It's a long process, it takes up about half the year from start to finish. It's probably one of the more fruitful things we do all year, and it's a responsibility we take seriously when we're impacting the taxpayers of the community and we make decisions throughout the process, and I think we did a good job meeting all the city's needs but also being reasonable in what the impact is on the taxpayer, so I appreciate all the work on that.
I would echo that.
Yep. Your Honor, obviously, we should address Mr. Kwame's question, or direct somebody to answer his question. I mean, obviously, from a council perspective, you know, I mean, I think, you know, there is a plan for the RTC which obviously does include some demolition, you know, the work that's up there, done up there is funded by the state, that state funding has run out. So obviously, there was an extension to the last grant we had, and so any future money, you know, is subject to what we can get from the state. And, you know, just because something's in a budget doesn't mean saying it gets spent because it gets taken somewhere else. And obviously, the focus has been for almost 20 years on the RTC to no avail, so, and I think, you know, it's deserved that we put the focus to downtown and the riverfront and an aquatic center as being something that's more likely to come to fruition than the RTC.
And the, to the question of state funding, that was the topic of the committee the whole discussion tonight, which is postponed, like I mentioned, until the 18th of December, so we will further that discussion at that time. And the $1.3 million that Mr. Kwame mentioned has been documented in the bids that are currently out, so. But we will continue that discussion on December 18th, that committee the whole four o'clock. All right. Next item on the agenda is an update on the Target store.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council, at the last council meeting, there was interest expressed wanting to make a resolution supporting ongoing efforts on the Target closing announcement and also encouraging residents to shop local, so we figured we might as well use the opportunity to give a quick update, and if the council still wants to make that resolution of support, they're certainly free to do so. Just high level, it's in your packet, more detail, and we've, I think we've released all these details through media outlets in the past. There's not a whole lot of new to report in the last week, but a few weeks back, Mayor Shire, Amy Baldwin, Bill Adams, Bill Luther, and I went down to the Twin Cities to Target headquarters and met with a handful of middle management. We met with the Senior Vice President of Government Affairs, the Vice President of Corporate Finance, the Director of Real Estate, member of Community Relations, and then also the Director of Government Affairs. So they, in that meeting, they reiterated that their decision has been made and they're going to close the store in February. As a result of the meeting, I think what we learned is that we weren't talking to decision-makers, and that's not to be disrespectful of the people in the room, it's just simply these people were tasked with maintaining the message, and so we left there dedicated to trying to get ahold of somebody higher up, whether that be the CEO or members of the Target Board. And throughout the last few weeks, we've been following leads and trying to make contacts with those members, and with our local legislators, Senator Ingberitson and Representative Nornus, we got the governor's office involved. I understand that the governor within the last week has personally talked to the CEO of Target on our behalf, and we're continuing to try to make efforts to ourselves meet with the CEO of Target. Hopefully, we'll have more to update in the coming days. And then on the other end, at the last council meeting, we talked about engaging H2M, which is a communications and marketing firm with an office here in Fergus Falls, to begin crafting that communication strategy around shop local, and we're going to kick that meeting off next week, a week from today, I believe, to start the efforts and pitching that message and understanding the word, the communication that we have to have with our local business community to ensure that we're ahead and proactive on other businesses that may be experiencing similar things, and just being more in tune with what's going on. So with all that being said, we continue to work on the Target announcement. You know, I want to certainly preface my comments or in my comments by saying that we have an uphill climb, and there's nothing for certain. I don't want to give anybody a false sense of hope that we're going to change the decision, but I think people should rest assured that the efforts will be continued until we reach that day or until we get the answer that we want, and we're not asking Target to change their mind, we're asking Target to work with us on a creative strategy to find a model that works in Fergus Falls, or simply to extend their decision, because they did recognize and they do see the grassroots efforts of the community with the large petition and also with the Grassroots Shopping Day that was organized here a few weeks back, which more than tripled their goal for the day. So they were appreciative of the local efforts, and we remain appreciative of the local efforts. And with that being said, if the council wants to make a resolution of support of these continuing efforts, I would encourage that. Otherwise, like I said, we will continue to work on that and keep the public and the council updated as to what's going on.
Any questions from the council? If not.
I'd make that resolution, the council, council obviously request staff continue the effort. I'll second that resolution.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Richels.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you, Andrew. There is no new business this evening. Under announcements, I just again remind everyone that we will be meeting at four o'clock on December 18th with our lobbyist Joel Carlson to discuss our 2018 request to the Minnesota State Legislature regarding funds for regional treatment center campus. And the only other thing I'd like to say is just thank you to everyone who showed up on Saturday night to light the tree, what a blast. It was a lot of fun, it was, I don't know how many people were there, but there was a lot. Thank you to Guy and the Public Works Department, the tree looks great. It is on a live tree, is that illegal, is that actually up to code?
We have connection lights.
Oh, okay. Thank you to Steve Erickson, the Downtown Riverfront Council, for all the work that you guys put in. Amy Nordland, the front and center singers, Mr. Garvin at Hillcrest and his singers, what a fun evening, who am I forgetting? Oh, Ms. Tilke's eighth grade class who read poems, had some poetry about community, so really, what a blast. So thanks, everyone who showed up, and thanks to all the staff who made that happen, so. Anyone have anything else to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned.